To the flag of liberty and to the republic, to a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I'm just going to take a moment of silence today. Honestly, everybody dealing with the severe weather in the state. We hope everybody stays safe. I'm leaving everybody in the room on their way home tonight. Just please take a moment of silence. Thank you. Public service announcements. I will just begin briefly stating that nomination papers are available, and we have one moderator spot open, two spots for a three-year term of Board of Selectmen, one Board of Assessors spot for three years, one Sturbridge School Committee spot for three years, two Tantascos school committee spots for three years, one constable spot for three years, one Board of Health position for three years, one Recreation Committee position for three years, one Recreation Committee for one year, two Zoning Board of Appeals positions for three years, three Library Trustee positions for three years, and one Library Trustee position for one year. So please, everybody participate, get involved. We need more hands at all times. And with that, any public service announcements, Mary?
Just that it's open burning season, so people would need to call down at the fire department for a permit.
Mary Dowling?
No.
Mary Lou?
No.
Oh, great, great. So moving to the Cable Advisory Committee, you want to come up?
I just want to say, Mr. Menard has done a tremendous amount of work. His committee's been wonderful as a whole, and as a chair of that committee, he's just been really phenomenal and is going to make all of our lives a lot easier by doing all the legwork on this. So, thank you.
You already said it off early, but thank you.
This is selfish, but out of the back of your head, because you are helping me immensely.
So, thank you. This is Al Menard. I think I know several of you. Chair in the Cable Advisory Committee. Wanted to get before you this evening, I've met, as Robin said, a couple times with Robin. We've made a lot of progress as a group, and I will say, as I shared with Robin, I think it was hard at first to try to get into this to understand really what we can do from our directive. The state has been very helpful. I've engaged with them two times myself, and then I actually invited them here. They came to a meeting in December to really help level set the playing ground, you know, what we need to do. Our current contract expires April of 2025, so there's a lot to be done over the next year. One of the things that is required as part of the state in the engagement in negotiating is to come before the board. Right? So I'm going to do this probably, I said another meeting probably in six months, but I do think there's going to be some more engagement with you as we progress with some of the thoughts around the negotiations. So I'll get into that in a second. So just touching on the consulting with the Massachusetts Department of Telecommunications and Cable. I spoke with them a couple times. Like I said, they have been very helpful in really kind of talking through what towns go through and what municipalities go through in the negotiations. Unfortunately, I think one of the things that we as a group had a misconception is we could do a lot more to try to negotiate with other providers. And the reality of that is, is it's a public, you know, the public document that firms are aware of when the contract is up. If they intended to come in, they'd be here, and they are not here. To my knowledge, we have not been approached by any other provider other than Spectrum, our current provider. If you look, there is a page, and I can share this actually with Michelle to circulate with the group, there is a page that gives you all of the contracts for the entire state. And you can actually look at the ones that, the dates that most recently have been negotiated over the past couple of years. No one has been able to bring other providers in to negotiate because the cost of the infrastructure change is too high. So it is something we could, if we really felt passionate about, that that's what we wanted to pursue, but the reality is, we most likely will not be able to change away from Spectrum because of the infrastructure, the costs associated with the infrastructure. I'll pause there on that for a second. I see a lot of, you're shaking your head, so I'm assuming you're aware and understanding of that already.
Yeah.
Yes.
What is the actual cost right now to re-bring in a new provider today? What would the cost be?
I don't think we know that, right? Without engaging them to ask them to put a bid in.
Sure.
It's probably pretty significant, to be honest with you, because part of the negotiation, it's the lines, the polls, the infrastructure around everything that's in place today.
Can I ask a question? We weren't.
Yeah, sure.
No, this is, happens every time the contract comes up, and people ask, why can't others come in? What is the process, though, for us to reach out? I know our chair just asked for the cost, but what's the process? You said that we can do it if we wanted to.
Sure.
What's involved in that, actually? What do we do?
So I can tell you, right?
Write to them?
It's me calling and reaching out to them to say, we want you to provide a proposal. I'd probably have to work with town council to draft a request for a proposal. The reality, like I said, is it can be done. It's just, it's highly unlikely because they already know, like Cox or any of the other providers, Comcast or any of the providers, they know our situation. They're privy to it, but they look at the contracts, and I wish I brought it with me. There's a grid of all of the state. We are central to, Spectrum is basically the entire central Massachusetts, with the exception of Holland. Holland can tap, is using Cox where they're tapping in through northern Connecticut. So we could, it would mean we would have to, through town council, we would have to request to extend our current agreement for the period of time that we need to be able to negotiate and look at it and to get what you asked for, is the costs and everything else. It's not something you can't do, but it's highly unlikely. So they've consulted. The state has basically said, you know, you can proceed and try, but there's been no town successful in moving on with their current provider. There's a precedent.
Just ask, because we get a lot of resident complaints.
I'll touch on that, too.
About Spectrum. So I don't know, is it a big financial burden on our end to seek proposals? And then at least we can, maybe it's something the board can talk about, we can tell residents, no, it's costing X, we've tried. Because we've never really actually tried. We've always.
It was 10 years ago that you negotiated the last contract, so it's very dated. Technology's changed obviously a lot, and the advent further of Internet, work from home, so yes, that, and I'll touch on the complaints in a second.
Okay, I'm just putting that out for thought.
But we could, we could go to other, you know, we could go to Cox, because they're in the next town over. We could go to others and say, can you give us a bid? But that, the cost would be town council. I mean, yeah, to.
For us, it'd be large legal costs.
To negotiate.
Legal costs, pretty much.
But for them.
Take it off, yes. Yeah, for them, the millions.
Millions.
Invested to town, and with, this is probably where you're going to go, with the lessening, and lessening, or reduction of their services and presence. So they're going to have to put infrastructure in that's going to be outdated probably in two years. So, and I'll defer to Al tomorrow on that, because this was something he brought up to me that I hadn't really given much thought to.
So it's complicated, it's, I'll say it, it's frustrating, right? I'm sure, and that's part of one of the things I think we have to educate the public on is, this process is not easy to go to another provider. And when we talk about complaints, we often, and I'll touch on that in a second, it's mostly the Internet, to be honest with you, and that's where, you know, it's, we have Spectrum inevitable because we're using it through the lines for cable. So if we were to switch to another provider, that would give you an option for another Internet provider. There are Internet options that are growing. Some haven't really reached Sturbridge yet, you know, some like the Verizon 5G and others. It just may not fully be throughout the town. So there are things that are coming that we would not be, we wouldn't have control over. There is oversight around cable, not so much around the Internet portion of it. So it's, I've learned a lot around, unfortunately, as a subscriber, right? And understanding, it's a complicated process. And like I said, if we, we're going to start to get into the heart of starting the new issue with Spectrum, I will say, if we come back and say we want to recommend at least looking at it, it would be the legal cost to say we would like a bid from another provider.
That's what I thought, okay.
That's a long answer, but.
No, I get it.
It's complicated. So part of consulting with the Department of Telecommunications and Cable, there are required steps that we have to do in order to move forward. One, obviously, is me being here tonight. I'll be here probably a couple more times, I think, throughout the year. Assess the needs. We did start doing this. We need to do that a little more in earnest. They gave us some guidance around what we need to do to talk about what our needs are holistically across the town. So that, those are some of the things that we're going to focus on in the next couple of months. I do need to schedule a meeting with Spectrum. They are due and are responsible to come in on an annual basis. I don't know if they've come in historically. They're supposed to. Contractually, they're supposed to. So I am going to be reaching out to them. I think I'm, what I would like to do, and I guess this is a question, is schedule that as part of our Cable Advisory Meeting, and then invite you to join us if you're, if you'd like to join that meeting. I don't know that it would, should take up a Board of Selectmen meeting initially, but I think some of the conversations when we bring them in is to at least get in front of the Cable Advisory Committee. Is that something you think?
Yeah.
Because they have not, have they come in over the past couple of years?
No, you're not.
Yeah, I think it's.
Initially.
I think it's the fact that you didn't have an advisory committee really in play.
Yeah.
They, contractually, they need to come in, because they need to be accountable to some of the things, to go back to Mary, I'll touch on it in a second, the complaints. We need from them, you know, the general updates, what's going on, what are they doing about technology. Part of the negotiation as we progress will be, what will they be doing, and what are we going to hold them accountable just to update our own existing infrastructure? So some of those, those will be some of the negotiation points that we'll get into. Complaints. One thing we learned, and I shared with the advisory group, the world, I work in financial services. Unless you put something in writing, it doesn't count as a complaint. So in 2022, we had one complaint. That's, so if you look at social media, that's not correct, right? And I think that's, part of that's the education of people need to understand, you cannot vent on social, you can, but it's not going to get you anywhere. And if you have a complaint about service, you've got to log it, and you have to put it in writing. One of the things that we're going to work with Spectrum is understand, is that an email? Or is it a formal written process? Because in 2023, the next year, we've up to 36 complaints. But if you think about the noise that you hear, and if you're present on social media at all, the town is pretty vocal about the concerns with issues with Spectrum. So that doesn't correlate exactly to what Spectrum's sharing for what the complaints they receive. Thirty-six is very small. I mean, one is, it's laughable, that there was only one for an entire year. So we need to educate the public around how you complain, so that we can formally address that. Part of the process, too, is we are supposed to be working with them, supervision of all of the complaints. That hasn't happened. So that's one of the things, even without the negotiation of the contract, that has to happen and be in place. Report to the citizens. Once we get further along and understand the path that we're probably going to go, and that's where we, once we've kind of defined the negotiation points, the progress and where we are, that's when we would probably look to midsummer timeframe to do a public forum. We have to do one. I don't know that necessarily, again, I'll work with Robin, if that necessarily means it's this meeting, or is it a separate meeting? I think we need to define that. And then obviously, I did put a target of coming back again in another six months, but thinking about this after putting this together, we probably will come back in the, something a little bit sooner, just to give you a little more progress specifically, and I think, Robin, I think that's where we potentially may go to executive session to talk about some of the things that we specifically.
Contractually, is it?
I don't know that we would talk about the specifics around what we want to negotiate at that point.
Right.
We need to probably have that conversation with you, and the probably, I would say, target about three months from now. That's pretty much it. I know we have a lot of work to do and come back and give more updates. I will apologize, my one pager, it was a lot bigger when I looked at my laptop. When I printed it, it came out small. I apologize for that.
It's fine. Any questions from the board?
Not at this time, no.
No, it all makes sense.
When we get into the nitty gritty of, and we've been through it 10 years ago, what we want and what you get, it's mile apart.
Well, I'm hopeful that we can change that. I do think that we have leverage. Leverage, and I will say, the open leverage that we will have is, if you look at the city of Worcester, they have not signed their contract. They're not happy with the terms of, you know, based on the research we've done in following what they're doing. And some other towns, we can ask for an extension. We don't have to sign and meet that April 2020, 25 date. Spectrum, I'm assuming, in their best interest, is going to want to have that signed and executed. So we really need to determine what are the things that we are must haves, and put those on the table and really negotiate from that point.
So I have a couple questions, maybe thoughts. One, what is Worcester doing? Because I'm down, Worcester's Internet is atrocious, and it's just much worse than here.
So they, if, off the top of my head, right, we were following them because there was, there were a lot of news articles about some of the concerns that they had. They hired a consultant to come in and do an assessment, and the primary focus ends up being Internet.
Sure.
Cable not so much, because people, a lot of people are cutting ties. And actually, that's a point I think I need to bring up.
Yeah, that was my next question.
Is if people, as we're seeing, and this is an important one, I apologize, I didn't put this on as a bullet point, is as people cut ties with cable, the amount of money that the town gets back is going to drop. There's no money that gets paid to the town based on Internet usage. So for public funding for our public access comes out of that funding, we have to be aware that that number's dropping, because people are moving away from cable. So, and that's, that's all federally regulated, we have no control over that, same thing with the pricing, right? But that's a, that's a key component around understanding, setting our budget go forward for the town, that if, if more people cut cable and go to streaming services, that's less revenue the town will receive.
And you know, the question is, do we, are we able to, and do we, instead of the fee that's, like, take an equivalent fee that you pay on your cable bill in town to get this service, do we have a streaming fee? Or is there legally, can we have a streaming fee to offset that cost? So these are just, it's just a broad question right now, and sort of not ready to be answered, I don't think, but.
Correct.
Just something to think about. Can we offset that with, you know, when you buy a streaming channel right now, you pay $5.99 for Friendly TV or whatever, you know, can you, can we charge $2 a month for Sturbridge TV or whatever that same equivalent fee is that's on the cable bill for those who don't use cable but want the service? And I think that those are just things we have to look at legally with the federal regulations.
So the, the other part of it, and this is, so, you know, which I'm sure a lot of the complaints were ESPN being locked out of all the cable this year, and all of the, basically, that Spectrum and all of these companies are becoming, they're not cable companies anymore, they're becoming Internet companies.
Exactly.
So what, and maybe, and I guess we're probably not at the point of being able to answer this question, but I think, from a regional perspective, if Worcester's contract's open, if the other towns or any other town that's around us is open, what improvements are they going to make to the region? Because although some companies are not, you know, Verizon and Comcast are, have different capital abilities than Spectrum, and whatever it might be, so, and these markets become a lot more appetizing when you're not just dealing with it. Now, I don't know how you do that, but it's a much broader.
It's, so the, I think the purpose of the Massachusetts Department of Telecommunications and Cable is to set the level playing ground.
Sure.
The infrastructure is town by town, city by city.
Sure.
So I think unfortunately, I think we talked about that as a group, actually, it's one of what you're raising is, you know, can you leverage, like, using Holland as an example? They're tied into Cox because of proximity, right? We're hooked right to, we're right next door to Holland, we could, it can, it all goes back to what the infrastructure in the town is and the expense associated with that. I will say, you know, as one of the leading complaints around Internet, and this is where we as a committee need to help kind of work through and do, but help navigate with the public is, oftentimes, too, the cable, the Internet issues are your own infrastructure issues in your house. And I think one of the things we want Spectrum to be able to do is help educate that what is it that you should have in your house to make it work at its optimal, so you can have an optimal experience, right? I think a lot of times, that is an issue. We do know that parts of the town are dated, too. I mean, you're talking, there's upgrades that probably have in town with the lines for years.
Sure.
That are, that need to be updated as well.
Yeah, the radio silence is the issue, and it's a deliberate radio silence. But a radio, that radio silence had been tacitly blessed by the state for the better part of 40, 50 years, right? But, but the same token is, is the, it's not really like a collective action, it's when, you know, you tie yourself with the complaints of the second largest city in the state, and really, the region, the utilities, the DPU has to pay more attention to you.
Yeah.
And they just do. And so, and there is, and thank you for doing this, because having somebody who is being, taking the time to build out this sort of accountability net, is what we're trying to, with the limited limits that we have, is very important, because this is probably in post-COVID, one of our most important resources.
You nailed it, yes.
Economically speaking, it's probably the most important. So it's, so anyways, just really appreciate it all. I know it's a lot of work.
Yeah, I mean, I think personally speaking, too, I work from home full-time now. If you ask me if I was going to do that four years or five years ago before COVID, no. And I work in financial services, that was not the norm.
Sure.
And that, you know, and I think in my own neighborhood, half the people work from home, right? So it's, it's a growing, different challenge than what it was 10 years ago. So it's, so I think it's, at the end of the day, we need to put out what we want to, what we expect to have completed, and what are the things that, you know, nice to have versus what we're going to require. And we're going to put that together for you.
I've got one question first.
Sorry.
Go ahead, yes.
Do we have, do you have sufficient data from the community going into this negotiation, or do you need more information or survey or something like that?
I do, and Robin's been very helpful with, whenever I need information.
No, I just meant from the community itself, I mean, from the.
Getting help publicly.
Yeah, I mean, I think you've got to have, see, this is where I think, this is the fall down is, Spectrum should have been in here on an annual basis to give, there's a number of reports that they're due to give us that they don't give us. So what I'm going to do is tell them, we need them, I need to know the dates that they're going to provide them, and when we're going to get them on an annual basis, so that they should, they are supplied to you and to the Cable Advisory Committee. That hasn't happened. So I think once we do that, we can then go further into assessing, working with the community to say, okay, and like Heather, for example, I talked to her about, once we get, I think they called it a survey map, when we get a survey map from them around what the line statuses are across the town, I'm going to sync up with Heather around what she thinks, you know, and the expectations, make sure it all comes together.
Right.
So that, those are some of the things that we're going to be working on.
Mary, I think.
I just had two, two thoughts, but one of them's linked to what you just said and what Jamie just said, is, you know how you said one year they only had one complaint, and social media is not the proper channel for Spectrum to know there's complaints? When you go into negotiations, would it be helpful if we opened up our website and asked the community to share any concerns they have with their service going into negotiations? If you had, you know, a couple hundred, and not simply, I don't think I get good service, you know, it would have to be concrete examples of what they should have been doing with Spectrum. I don't know if that's useful or is even consistent with how they expect to get complaints. It's probably not. It's my first thought. And my second one was, does it benefit us to have a 10-year contract when things aren't changing so much? Or would it be more beneficial to have, say, a five-year contract and see where we are after that?
I will say, that will be one of our key.
That's sort of a term of negotiation, I think.
That will be the, that will probably, that will be one of the key negotiation points. A 10-year contract with how fast technology is changing doesn't seem right.
It seems to suck.
I don't know that I can get on board with that and push, I really think with the way the technology's moving, going beyond five years, is probably not a good thing. 10 years ago, we had no idea, right?
Well, as soon as you said how much technology's changing, I thought the term of our last contract isn't in sync with that changing world.
Exactly. And then I think to tackle your complaint question, right, again, I think it goes back to education, educating the public on how to complain. Spectrum, again, is due to explain to us what have they done to resolve those complaints, and it's, I think it's, we have to start with them to get, what are the 36 that they saw over the past year? How did they address them? And then, you know, those, I'm going to probably think that a lot of those themes consist into what people are experiencing, beyond what you said of just terrible service, right? Part of that is also education, like I said, is, in everybody's own homes, they may not be operating optimally around what kind of, what do you, what do you have for a router? What do you have in use for your own technology? You can't just finger point to Spectrum. You have to understand, and that's a hard topic, too, because not everybody knows fully what they should have in their home. If you just took what they give you off the shelf, that may not be optimal if you're working from home full-time and trying to run the fastest speeds and whatever else you're doing in your home, so.
They're going to look at the 36 and think they're doing a stellar job, so I don't, you know, 36 is nothing, really.
I don't even, yeah, I mean, that's what's interesting.
What if we were to put out a survey and ask people to respond on how satisfied they are with their services? And if people did respond, we'd have something to go forward with during negotiations and say, well, we did our own survey of people, and we have, you know, 250 people that gave a 3 out of 10.
But on.
I don't know, I'm just.
I think it's twofold, right? We can ultimately do that, but I think.
I mean, nobody may respond, you know, people, they don't respond to our.
Well, but they can, the formality of logging a complaint with Spectrum is not going to be through the Cable Advisory Committee.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
But, no, no, I know you're saying, but if we do a survey, I don't want to set false expectations to the public that we're taking, we can solve all of those problems. It's kind of a double-edged sword, right?
Well, this would be strictly for negotiation purposes. I think where the challenge, though, is what Al pointed out, that a lot of times people are going to complain about things, we're going to have to weed out, which we probably could, but what's their problem, their, within their home versus which is Spectrum's problem? And people aren't going to sort of know the difference. So are you satisfied with Spectrum? No, I'm not. Well, maybe it's because the router and equipment you have in your home isn't appropriate. So I think it creates a, we'll have to think that through carefully.
We do, we need to think that through. That is a topic that we, we've talked through a couple times.
It needs to be specific.
True.
I mean, you get 100 people respond, and 98 is going to say, I'm not satisfied.
Like my service.
But what aren't you satisfied with?
Well, and the other part of it is, is that this, a lot of these equipment is being provided by the company, and that most of it, particularly for lower-income people, probably is. And then the, and then you step further through it, you know, there's things about where to set it up in the house and all that. But the blunt reality is, they know exactly where all the diagnostic information is.
Yes.
And that if they, and so they know which complaints are real, and they know which complaints aren't real. And so, yes, we do need to have our people understand how to make them look at it, but fundamentally, any, any failures are trackable based upon the data being pulled in any which direction, and if it's going through their own modems, they know which IPN it's going to. So the, so I guess as we're talking about this, one thing we might want to reach out to KP about, and I don't know what the board feels about, is making sure we are asking for all the right information and are doing it under letter of counsel, because it's not fair to you to be trying to figure out a broad information.
No, but I will tell you, that is where, without getting into too much detail, that's where the state has guided us. So a lot of what you just said, right, is we can leverage them, and they, like I said, they've been a very helpful resource.
Yeah.
And without spending town's money on council quite yet, we're going to formulate around what are, what are the things that we need for assessment.
Sure.
Because what, part of the other thing is, is we don't want Spectrum to just come and send you a proposal. They could do that right now, and then the clock starts ticking. We don't want that right now, because we want to prepare ourselves to be able to reach We don't want that right now because we want to prepare ourselves to be able to reach to them to say, okay, this is what we're expecting from you for the proposal.
Okay, that makes sense. But it's still, but that doesn't, it's a relatively discreet use of resources to give you support right now.
Okay.
And we don't have to send it to them.
Okay.
So don't, you know, these are very technical issues and to be frank, that even if the state's just, because what happens with these types of negotiations is everybody throws up their hands, like it's the federal government, the state, we could never do anything, there's no way to address it. And that's not, and that's what they want you to believe.
You're not going to get that from me.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about you. That's because it's, because this, often a lot of the people that are in the state doing this stuff, they want to know too. They want to make it work better.
Yep.
And you have to find the right people and all that, so just, you know, I think, go with the committee, do what you want. I don't want to take up more of your time unless there's any other.
I appreciate it.
And talk to Robin about what you need and don't be afraid to ask for it. And we don't have to, we don't have to shoot anything off to them yet. But don't, but don't, you don't have to, you don't have to reiterate the wheel.
And I appreciate your time tonight too. And like I said, I think we will be back and I'll work with Robin.
She's trouble, but we'd like her, you know?
You can usually find her.
Any other questions?
Don't think so.
No, not at this time.
All right, thank you.
You, Al, very much, Al.
Drive safe.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, Chief.
I'll start with October's reports.
Thanks, Chief.
2,000, 24,329 calls for service total, 565 arrests. These are for the year, so 47, I'll just go through October, 47 arrests, 2,154 calls for service. And mutual aid requests 16 times, mutual aid response 6 times. That's the highlights of the calls. Department operations, we had the Harvest Fest that we were at during October 14th. In October, the Sturbridge Police Department was recognized by the New England AAA for our traffic safety efforts. And we received a gold award again this year in '23. And Officer Tom Hine was recognized for his traffic safety enforcement efforts and he was recognized as Traffic Safety Officer of the Year. For training, Lieutenant Bateman attended Roger Williams University Mid-Management Command Training School in Rhode Island. Officer Titula became a car seat tech. He's our Burgess Elementary School Resource Officer, so we felt it was important that he become a car seat tech as well. And then we move on to calls at the school. Got a total of 18 calls. Eight at Burgess, one at the junior high, which was a sex offense. Burgess was one ambulance call, one alarm call, one administrative call, four 911 trace calls. Junior high was one sex offense. And that was basically some inappropriate photos that were sent between students. Senior high, we had nine calls. The first one, you'll see threats and harassment, that was actually, I referred to Brookfield Police because that's where the people lived, but we took the initial call. There was a domestic dispute at the school, but it didn't happen at the school, that actually happened at Warren, the victim of the domestic violence just parked in the school park lot. They were located there. Assist motor vehicle, foot patrol, 911 trace, another sex offense. That was an indecent assault and battery, one student to another. Ambulance call, minor motor vehicle crash in Section 12. Any questions on October?
Anything for the board?
Moving on to November, 2,325 calls for service. We had 57 arrests during the month. 118 citation. Mutual aid request again was 16 and we responded out of town one time. Department operations, we retired Velasco, our police canine, a patrol canine after nine years of service. He gave us nine strong years, retired him. And we graduated, we got a new dog who graduated also in November, Rea. She's a female lab, but it's not a dual, it's not a patrol dog like we have. This dog is not a bite dog, it's a search and rescue dog and it's going back to school to be narcotics, so it's not an apprehension dog. So we're not going to have a patrol bite dog that Velasco was, so.
And what is her name?
Rea.
Rea.
Yeah.
Do you not need that other kind of skill anymore or?
The bite dog?
Yeah.
No, I just chose not to go, there's a lot of liability with the bite dogs and people getting sometimes bit by accident and I just, this dog looked like something that we could use. We got a lot of narcotics that come through on the highways, get off the highways and the search and rescue component of it. So we just decided to go with the dual-purpose dog rather than the patrol dog. Just fits the department better for right now. Maybe I'll look, take another look at it down the road, but we have regional dog teams and there's plenty of bite dogs. This dog is really specialized with nose, so I wanted a strong nose.
So someone's lost on a trail? I know we use a drone too, but that Rea would be helpful.
Yeah, evidence recovery, somebody throws, gets in, you know, any type of domestic, they throw a weapon or robbery, they can do, he can do, she can do evidence tracking, people tracking, the trails is big, that was one of the things that we looked at. Actually, she had her first fine last week at a domestic violence call that took place at one of our hotels. The guy fled on foot and our dog, working with the state police dog, went after the guy. I think there was a, it was, he was hiding in the woods and the dog, dog led him. So it was a first fine within not a short time of being employed by the town of Sturbridge, so he's off to a great start.
I can tell you historically, the narcotics dogs do very, very well on catching drugs. They've worked in departments that have had them and they're just phenomenal.
Yeah, so she, she, she actually went to the State Police Academy. Sometimes we'll send, they'll go to either Boston or the State Police Academy and this one went to the State Police Academy and mass state police trained the trainer, which is Officer Garrett Dana, and the dog, free of charge. So it was a win-win for us and, you know, the state police are in our backyard, when they all train together, they work together and it makes for a great work environment for all of us. We helped with the bus evacuations at the elementary school. We participated with Southbridge. We sent our canine, our comfort canine, Rocky, over to Southbridge for touch truck over there to help them out. In November, we worked the Home of the Brave race, got a lot of positive feedback on that. Training, that was the, Rea, the highlight of that was Rea graduating. Let's see, uptick in November for sick time, we had an officer out for a substantial amount of time for surgery. School calls, four Burgess calls, there was foot patrol alarm, a well-being check. The well-being check was just a concern over a student's well-being, how they were behaving. 911 trace to junior high, we had one ambulance call. Senior high, we had weapons violations, which was a juvenile had a knife on his belt. We had an E-911 trace, an accident, minor damage, two of them assist a citizen, assault and battery. One student punched another student in the face. There was no charges at the victims and their families' request, everything was handled internally with the school. Well-being check, and that was, well-being check was, a wife called concerned about her husband that was riding his mountain bike up by the school, was at the school and she hadn't heard from him. So we went up and located him, there's no issues with that. Anything questions for November?
No, those assaults, one was boy, girl, and the other was.
Yeah, the sexual assault was a boy and a girl, yeah. And the other one was a boy, boy.
Boy.
Moving on to December, the final report of the year. We had 2,558 calls for service for the month of December, but we ended the year with 29,900, no, I'm sorry, 30,201 calls for service, which puts us up about 245 additional calls from the previous year. We had 57 arrests for December, 678 total arrests for the year. 59 of them were OUIs, 23 of them were drugs. We did 504 incident reports for the year, 333 crash reports. The crash reports, I'll just highlight there, that's only the ones that we actually took reports. We probably responded to over 600, I'd say 650 or so motor vehicle crashes where a report wasn't necessary, but our officers were tied up at the scene. But these were actual reportable crashes. Throughout the year, we issued 2,566 citations. December, we had 166 alone. We checked 6,736 residents throughout the year, 543 in December. We had 111 domestic disturbance calls, 12 in December. BNA, larcenies and thefts, we had 83. Four in December. Mutual aid requests throughout the year, we had 146 times that we had to call for an outside police department to assist us and we went out of town 16 times. The department operations, during December, we held our annual senior holiday luncheon. At this year, we did at the Hamilton Broning Gun Club because the senior center is under construction, so we couldn't do there. Barbara Boydow, my credit goes to her, she organizes that event every year faithfully and she does an outstanding job. And I also have to thank Village Pizza, who donates food along with Harst, Lenny at the Hearthstone. Those two businesses faithfully every year donate spaghetti, meatballs, salad, rolls, drinks, everything. So I would like to thank them, they do, if it wasn't for them, we'd have a difficult time getting that yearly dinner completed. We also participated this year, thanks to many donations that came into the Sturbridge Police Department. Cops and kids shop, shop they held at Walmart where police officers from Sturbridge and Southbridge went down and had donations and they went with kids and helped get Christmas presents and stuff, so that was very successful. Motor vehicle accidents between Walmart Plaza, there was three in December. Training, nothing really, just normal training there. December, like I think Town Hall in general, we were hit with some pretty significant colds and flus going around for the month of December, so I had some officers and dispatchers out. Burgess, nine, nine calls for service in December. One was the investigation, that was a disruptive student that we had to go over. Rocky was deployed as a common canine and that assisted with that student that was going through a crisis at the time. Foot patrol, four over there. Ambulance calls, two, administration, one. And then there was a minor two-car crash there as well. Junior high, we had assist citizen group, that was a juvenile possibly in possession of a marijuana pen. The school searched the juvenile and there was no marijuana pen found, so that was closed out. We did have a threat, a serious threat to shoot up the school during the month of December. This was brought to our attention through FBI, who actually picked it up through social media and called us in the morning saying, hey, we intercepted this, you may want to go check it out. We were able to find, locate the person, the Snapchat person and do a thorough investigation and that person is facing criminal charges in the school for posting something like that on social media. So even though it's a juvenile, we still, zero tolerance for that, they're going to have to go to court. Just think that's the proper method when they're making serious threats like that, so.
When was that again?
December.
Because I don't remember being briefed, told about that.
That was at the junior high.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, this was just last month.
Right, right, so you're telling us now, I get it. No, it just took me by surprise.
Yeah, a couple weeks ago. I can give you the date in a second if you want.
No, that's okay.
The senior high school, we had three motorists assists, one 911 and one foot patrol. Just at the end of the year, you know, I want to thank the officers, our dispatchers, they did a great job. Our calls continue to go up for service and we had a pretty rough year. Some officers were out for extended periods of time. We had vacancies, people in police academies and when you're down and you're shorting, everybody else is stepping up to step, you know, take, cover those shifts and whatnot. So I want to thank them for their hard work throughout the year. They did a, they did an excellent job and I'm very proud of everything they've done. And that's my report.
Questions from the board?
No.
All right, Chief, I think that's all.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Can I say?
Okay, night, God bless.
Good evening, Chief.
How are you?
Happy New Year to everyone.
Yes, you too.
So you have from me, the reports for November and December. I do want to highlight a couple of things, year end, we finished the year with 2,384 calls for service. That encompasses everything we do, but does not encompass any inspectional services. We don't count those in our numerical totals. Of those, we had 68 fires of all different types. That's one up from 2022. We had 1,609 medical calls as compared to 1,521 medical calls in 2022. So our calls for service also continue to go up, just like the police department. The difference in the total calls is made up of false alarms, public assists and other non-fire, non-emergency type calls. So we do, I believe I mentioned this the last time I was here, I am seeing a consistent set of incidents where we are getting called for multiple calls at simultaneous times. Two, sometimes three, sometimes even four calls are coming in simultaneously. The reason that's important to know and quite a problem is because of our staffing level. When we have three people on duty, we can cover that first 911 call and then I have one person left, so we have to send that person to the second call as a first responder and wait for mutual aid community to come in if it's an ambulance call. If it's a fire call, it's even bigger wait time because we have to wait for the fire engine to respond from another town. Four people, I can do two calls simultaneously, two ambulance calls, and then I have to call for mutual aid. And in the rare occasions where we are fortunate enough to have five people working, I'm able to cover those two calls and still have one person to respond to a third call, be it a fire call or an ambulance call as a first responder. The drawback with that is they really can't do much on a fire scene by themselves, so we're waiting for mutual aid. So those are, we're seeing, I'm seeing that more and more and I don't know the reason for it. I don't know if there's a method to, you know, hone down or narrow down why that's happening. I think it's just luck of the draw, but we are seeing it more and more. For us, training over the last couple of months, Tower One is back in service. It was out for quite a long time due to the engine failure and I was hesitant to put it back in service prior to having a representative from Greenwood Emergency Vehicles, who is the dealer for that truck, come out and do an entire refresher training class for all the personnel. So that was done, completed. The truck is back in service, it's been responding to calls, most recently Saturday morning to School Street for a reported electrical fire in the apartment building. Turned out to be not as significant as it sounded, but the latter truck was able to respond to that call. November, all of the, all of our personnel were trained on asthma recognition and treatment on the EMS side. December, all the personnel received training on back injury prevention. I think it's important to try and keep our people as healthy and well as possible, proper lifting techniques, et cetera, et cetera, as well as our annual bloodborne pathogen training. These are organized trainings distributed by the training officer. They're in addition to the daily training that happens every day and is done by the shift commanders. And those topics vary from one end of our firefighting EMS spectrum to another. It's really what the shift commander decides he's going to teach that day, so. I would like to echo Chief Dessert's sentiments for my people, the year end came and went and the firefighters in the town of Sturbridge continue to do an unbelievable job. They come to work every day with good attitudes and a desire to provide the best service that they possibly can provide for the people in this town and I truly appreciate it. I'm honored to be represented with them and I thank them from the bottom of my heart.
Great, questions from the board?
No, nice letter from Deputy Chief, what's the name?
Hewlitt.
Hewlitt.
Yes, that was, yeah, they had a fire and we responded with an ambulance to stand by their station while they were busy at the fire, so.
So I like your charts, but I don't totally, I like how you give us the breakdown between fire and EMS. I don't totally understand though, so time is on like the x-axis, right? And then on the y, it's zero, 2.5, 5, 7.5, 10, 12.5, like what does that correspond to?
Uh, blah, 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 blah.
I don't.
Those, I'll have to get back to you, Mary, on that.
Yeah, I don't.
She's spending too much time in schools, she's asking questions.
X-axis, Y-axis.
I'm just trying to make it sound somewhat intelligent when I can't read the graph.
I will, I will get back to you on that graph.
Because X equals is.
Because then, like, for example, okay, thank you, because on November's it goes 2.5, 7.5, but then on January's it goes 0, 2.5, oh no, I'm sorry, it keeps going, but it's the same grid. It just goes up to 15. I just don't know what that means.
Yeah, those may be the number of calls we're doing in a day, but I will double-check that and get back to you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, just, yeah, thank you.
I will double-check it and let you know.
That's new, right? Or have you always been doing that?
We switched, we were forced to switch to this new program about a year and a half ago now. So these reports, you've probably been seeing them for about a year.
Oh, wow, and I just now asked what that meant, sorry. I'm sharper today than I guess I have been, I don't know.
Well, it's kind of hard to see on the paper because it's easier on a monitor.
Maybe.
Yeah, so.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Sure.
It looked like December, you had an exorbitant amount of mutual aid needed.
December was an extremely high month for us. The call volume, I don't remember it off the top of my head, you have it, but the call volume was really through the roof in December.
Because I was looking through and I was like, wow.
Yeah.
And also, one other thing, on the EMS side, is everyone taking the neuro training?
We are all set with neuro. We've, it's all done. We've taken both the practical and the. Uh, we are all set with Nero. We've all, we've, it's all done. We've taken both the practical and the didactic, so everybody's good to go.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Just
Excellent. All, I think you're all set, chief.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go a little out of order to get Mr. Barnesley out of here if you want. Come on up, sir.
Okay.
So we're going to action item B, uh, which is consideration and possible action on the appointment of Bill Barnesley to the Sturbridge Historic Commission for a term to expire November seventeenth of twenty twenty-five.
So um, we had a position open on historic. I did have a few applicants and it's always a tough choice when I have a few. Um, but you know, in some cases we have applicants who sit on multiple boards and I thought in this case it's nice Mr. Barnesley stepped forward. We, uh, he's not a fresh face in town as we know him well for another role that we don't want to publicly talk about.
Fire chief didn't even mention.
Yeah, he, uh. He's very close to a wonderful being that joins us in December. Uh, but uh, Mr. Barnesley, um, this is something he stepped forward on and as I said, I had a few applicants that are on several commissions, so it's very hard to choose sometimes. But I thought it was really great to have um, him step forward into this role and, and give this opportunity to him. Uh, clearly a part of the town in a unique way and uh, so we look forward to having him join our historic.
I think he would be welcome to audition. Um, Bill, I'm, I don't remember exactly what it was you did, but you took a lot of time and put together some historical.
Yes.
Ha, yes, I did.
Yes.
Cemetery.
Yes, I did. If you have a moment for a little backstory, about a decade ago, my ten-year-old nephew showed up in town to visit the grandparents. I was taking care of the grandparents, they were elderly. And, and he drove by the spooky cemetery and he looked at me with eyes like this and says, "You have a spooky cemetery?" I go, "Yeah, yeah, we do." "Can we go?" And so we went over there and I started walking through and he's looking at some of the stones and there was a um, Benjamin Hyde, Joshua's dad. Next to him is his wife, her stone, big letters, it says, "Dorkus Hyde." He goes, "What's a dorkus?" And I go, "I don't know. Let's go over to the library and talk about it," as we went to the library. And come to find out they have very, at the time, very limited materials. So I started, I was frustrated and, and not that, you know, like I didn't pound tables or anything. I said, "Okay, well, we can't get what we need." He went back home. My parents passed, I went back west, I came back here a couple of years later, kept driving by the cemetery and it's just sitting there staring at me. And I said, "Well, there's no one else that's going to do something like that." So I just went at it and I gathered what was available in the library, the restoration documents, a very old piece of a map, um, books that are two hundred years old. And I went out there and I sat down in front of Stone One. Um, uh, Jephtha Plimpton, right up closest to the front corner near Sadies. And uh, wrote down everything I knew about the stone, photographs, and then I cross-referenced that to the data. And from that, I wrote a book. It's in the library. It's also on the library's website. And it's not really a book like I wrote lots of chapters. I have an introduction and then the whole thing's just data. You know, this stone, this inscription, um, this is the materials made of, this is the motif that's on it. Is it an urn and willows? Is it a skull? Um, and uh, and then I went through and took everybody in the cemetery and did the genealogy and ancestry of everybody. So I can walk over to almost any stone in there, pull up my stuff and say, "Well, this, their parents are over there. That's their sister, that's their husband's family." And uh, and do that for that.
And it's all charted. He's got.
It's all charted, well, and there's, there's a map that's over there too. I created a real map. Um, and, and that was a challenge because you can't do GPS for those trees. I hate those trees. Just so you all know, they're really bad for the stones. Um, just a tidbit. And it's not just falling on them. Just, this is just, just somebody says, "Pff, make them gone."
Oh, no, no.
Well, if we're talking about the stones.
I know, I get it.
It's really, really bad for the stones. Um, all the old cemeteries I go to, the ones out in sunlight are in way better shape than ours. Um, and I go to a lot of cemeteries. It's fun. Anyway, so I used Jude McDonald, many of you know her, she works with the library. I handed her a ski pole and one end of a three-hundred-foot tape measure made her stand down there fighting off flying attack spiders. Uh, while I measured from that spot to the stones and then used trigonometry to actually GPS where the stones really were, because you can't do that under trees. You can't lay out a clean line. It's just kind of within thirty, forty feet-ish, which isn't good enough for a map. So I did all that and then uh, just this fall, it was annoying me um, because Wally Hershey asked me to uh, contribute to the um, the Historical Society's page. And I decided to put together a walking tour of the old cemetery. Matter of fact, I showed you, I have it in this jacket. This is a, an early brochure demo of uh, of the walking tour. This is the cemetery. And I made twenty-three stops in the cemetery about, you know, walking through the cemetery and I finished a uh, a booklet that backs this up, that explains why you're standing in front of that stone. And that, it would really would be backed up by the original survey or the online documentation. So anyway, so to answer your question, yeah, I did the old cemetery. Now I keep, I keep going over to the North Cemetery and Jude hits me with a stick and says, "No, you don't have time for all of that." But.
I think you chose the right person for this.
Yeah, his commitment to this has just been amazing.
Yeah, I think the appointment is manifest, but does anybody have any other questions or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the recommended appointment to the Sturbridge Historic Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, all those in favor? All right, welcome aboard.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for everything you do for this town, Bill.
That's my pleasure.
Such a huge contribution that is.
And good luck dealing with my husband.
A very good uncle that you took it to that next step when your nephew had a question.
Well, you know, I, you know, I uh, I, I loved you dearly, um, but in the evening she likes to watch sitcoms, which make my brain scream. So I, I, you know, so I sit on the couch next to her and, and I did all the physical research and I took all the pictures and I sit on the couch next to her, she puts on whatever and, and I flip over my little laptop computer and go, "Yes, honey, of course, honey, uh huh, uh huh." And uh, I pounded the research and I, I do trigonometry and, and uh, and you know, we're, we're bonding.
There it is.
I don't think I could sit there and watch some of those sitcoms, so.
I still now do CPR because of her, so. Tell her I said hello and uh, we thank you so much and I'm gonna keep moving on to Ms. Robin now.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Bye-bye.
Um, very quickly, I just want to pass along a thank you to DPW. Um, I was going to do that before we had this mess come in today, but the incredible amount of rain we have had has caused massive amounts of erosion, roadway erosion. We, they're doing their best to get to privates to fill the potholes, which by, by bylaw, we do fill potholes on, on privates. But they're also dealing with issues on a lot of the main public roads, burms that have washed out. The problem is they can't do hot patch right now because of the weather, so some people kind of have to just be a little patient on projects that were supposed to be coming forward. They will get to them, but in the short term, she's got such immediate issues of runoff and roadway disintegration, frankly. And then today, you know, every time she starts to get a little ahead, we get something like this, which is pretty much now going to be forty-eight hours of time tied up. So I just want to pass along a thank you. It's it, it, everybody sort of has an opinion on it and um, we talked about this today, too much salt, not enough salt, no salt, you know, too much plowing, now they're left plowing, more plowing. So everybody has an opinion, they, and DPW does a phenomenal job. It is not an easy job. Um, so I want to say thank you. The other thing I do want to bring up to the board quickly though, um, Heather had informed you all that she would be hiring temporary employees. We didn't officially have every one of them come in front of you, just because of the timing on that. I, I just want to make you aware of that and ensure that that's, that's okay with you. They're, we're treating them almost like, like a, a temporary seasonal kind of a situation. But in some cases, it's drivers going into our trucks, it's our equipment, it's not necessarily just vendors. But at the last minute, if she needs bodies, we just kind of need approval from you to allow me to put them on the temporary payroll. They're not long-term employees.
Any questions, concerns?
I have no problem with that.
Our trucks are insured and whatnot, so we're ensuring that's all fine. They all have to, you know, be licensed.
Because they're seasonal, you won't have to lay them off, right? Because they're really.
No, that doesn't impact our unemployment. It's hard because we can't ten-ninety-nine them because they're driving our equipment.
Sure.
So we have to be a little careful of the unemployment thing, but they wouldn't be an official layoff. We're not really classifying them that way. It's as a sort of per needed, like a part-time as needed.
Yeah, as long as it's covered by insurance, I see no issue.
I'm fine as long as you all don't have an issue. It's that borderline of what counts is what I have to put in front of you. And if you're comfortable, that doesn't count.
Great.
Great, thank you, it doesn't count. Uh, very quickly, town meeting Monday night, Burgess Elementary School, just a reminder, it is at Burgess.
Great.
So, so everybody remembers that. HVAC update, um, I did, I, I sort of have to ask for a forgiveness instead of permission. We needed to do some extra cleanup beyond which we'd originally anticipated. Becky was concerned uh, about having anybody back in the library without some cleanup on some insulation and whatnot. Uh, it was more than what the HVAC company itself would do and we had to bring in an outside company. We're fine on the procurement end, but normally we put contracts in front of you before I sign them. Um, in this case, I needed to get them going just so we could get the library back in operational, so a mea culpa on my part or, or, or forgiveness instead of permission, but I put my John Hancock on that one because we just kind of needed to get it going, so. Um, I don't know if you want to take a vote to ratify the action so that it's officially been done?
Um, yeah, we probably should. Anybody have any strong opinions to the contrary? Okay, um, do we have a motion, this is the bill for property restoration?
Yep.
Do we, do we have a motion? Do we, I guess it would be, let's see, amount, thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars?
Yep.
Um, I, I'm just. Yeah, I've got a second. Second. All those in favor?
I mean, and.
I will be discussing.
The total bill, though.
Yeah.
I mean, they have been working there.
I will be talking to the company to see if there is any offset on a bit of that cost. Uh, but we're looking with the change orders, where, how much we had left from the ARPA funding. I may have to do a little bit of facility funding on it over and above, but I, I can't have insulation on books.
Well, I guess, but it does seem to be the, the, to Mary's point, and I, I would do some, a little strong pushback because somebody put the, somebody was uninstalling uncleanly, insulation got on the books, period. Right? Like it's just, how's that happening otherwise? So you're not tarping, you're not, and I understand that if, if you're not, if you're, because I'm assuming it's fiberglass insulation, so if you're remediating so poorly on fiberglass insulation that you're not.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking just the insulation, I'm saying.
Oh, the whole project.
The whole project.
HVAC, HVAC projects are absolutely.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah.
But this is, but I, I guess I'm missing. No, that's just a lot of money on, on, that's, this sounds, this strikes me as somebody's doing something shoddy because I don't understand how you don't expect to cut into a wall and get insulation.
There's a lot of debate as to what the definition of occupied construction was on this project.
Well, there's, we, nobody was in the building.
But the books were considered occupied and that's, so we're having a little discussion.
Yeah, so, so as a chair, but the, the blunt reality is, is that you can tarp, you can tarp, you can tarp, you can tarp.
Yes.
I mean.
That's what plastic is for.
Yeah, anyways, I mean.
So it's a, it's an ongoing, no, it's an ongoing discussion.
Thank you.
Uh, a little bit just briefly, there are, the governor did uh, put forward some cuts to offset some of the um, shortfall she's seeing in revenue and we are going to see some of those in our earmark grants. Um, so right now, we just got an email today that earmarks got cut fifty percent. Some of that, the Senior Center Furniture Grant was fifty thousand, that's now down to twenty-five. That's not necessarily final, but right now they're asking us to revise our uh, requests to adapt to these fifty percent cuts on earmark grants. Uh, we are, this is all happening as we speak, so I can't provide much more information than that, but I want you to know, we are working with, stay in touch with the Representative Smola, Senator Fatman, because they were involved in these earmarks and they obviously know that we're not, no, no local communities are pleased with this and as a group, the small-town administrators are talking about this because it impacts small towns tremendously. Um, and then finally, just to retail, uh, uh, an update on marijuana retail, I don't want to get too much into it because there could be some executive session things, there are legalities and nuances. But the new legislate, the new, the, our new Cannabis Commission has basically uh, a lot of things fall in favor of the marijuana retailers versus the communities. Uh, the impact fee question is uh, far more challenging than it was before. We cannot charge an HCA fee just to have an HCA. There used to be sort of a, you could charge for that. That's off the table. We have moved to waive fees for any incoming if we were to have a new licensee come in, so we're okay on the equity and diversity aspect of it. But I do think at some point we're gonna need to look to see if it's even worth the effort to have an HCA when realistically, unless we were to see dramatic impact fees that we can very, very clearly document as we go forward. We had impact fees initially when we were setting it up. There were legal fees, there were assessment fee issues, planning, all of those things. But as we go forward, um, there may not be much impact fee going forward and it may just be logical at this point and we need to think about this. Are we gonna have these agreements at all? Or are they simply gonna operate like a regular retailer and we get the state revenue reimbursement? So I just want you to know, I'm sort of working my way through that. I may at some point, if we have to have an executive session, if we're dealing with where we are with the current contracts and what we're gonna do with those, I may have Nicole from KP virtual in because it is extremely complicated what the Cannabis Commission is doing. And it's harder for me, it's, it's really hard for me to translate all that to you. I sat in on an hour and forty-five minute session on this with her that she presented to a group of town administrators and we're all scratching our head a bit. So uh, I just want to give you an update on that and I believe, is that it? Uh, oh, and you have the year-end meals tax, so uh, very good numbers as you can see. We had rebounded on the rooms, we had not rebounded on the meals last year more than anything because there was a lack of help. So restaurants were not able to stay open. Uh, it looks like things were, are trending a bit better for twenty-three, so those numbers came in from Terry. I want to thank him for his uh, his efforts on that, so.
Robin, are these um, totals, is that our share? Or is that the total that?
That's the, the total, yeah. Yeah, that's the total and then we get a percent, that's the total that we've earned and we'll get a percentage back of it.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I wish we were getting that.
Yeah.
I'd be a very relaxed town administrator if we were seeing that kind of age numbers. And that, that is it for me.
Great, all right. So action items, um, let's just see if we can get through these relatively quickly so Robin can get on the road in this weather. Um, so we are, action item A, consideration and possible action to accept the resignation of Kathy Peterson from the Sturridge Historic Commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you to her for her service. Um, and then we're moving to action item C, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Dina Sexton, Sturridge Open Space Committee, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
All those in favor? The eyes have it. Consideration and possible action on the hiring of temporary plow driver, Cal Jalbert, ratifying this action.
Yep. That's one of these that I put them on until I could get support from you that we didn't need to do it, so.
Okay, so you need a.
So you could just vote it if you want, but then, and then going forward, I don't have to.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Consideration and possible action to reappoint Larry Morrison to the Sturridge Personnel Committee.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All right, consideration and possible action to accept the generous donation from Marie Del Dorian uh, to, uh, Sturridge, to the Sturridge Police Department in the amount of five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
We will send a note.
Rather than the normal go-around, does anybody have any old business?
Did we do the um, application for the hogger and peddle?
Oh, did I skip it?
Yeah, they weren't here though. Yeah.
Oh, I skipped it accidentally, but impressionably. Um, thanks, thanks, Mary Lou. Um, do we have any, um, anybody have any old business?
No. Just on the um, new hours, are those gonna be posted?
I did put those on Facebook. We will post those on the website as well. Yep.
Missed them on Facebook.
Yeah, I put them on my page. I don't know if you, you shared it, I think, so we will, we'll make sure we keep, we'll post that a few more times before February fifth.
Perfect.
Yep.
Any other old business? Mary? Uh, new business, Mary Bladger, you have any?
None.
Right on.
Um, so what's the latest on the sign getting erected, the Welcome to Sturridge sign?
The footings are in, and that was last week. Um, we had to, in fact, uh, we've got to get the invoice. He was asking for the update on the status of the last ten voices that he submitted, so we do need to check on that. But he's moving, weather has basically now been the stall because after he put the footings in, the next day we had a couple inches flat, twelve inches of snow. So, but it's, it's, it's still moving. Just, yeah, just weather now.
All right, uh, Mary Lou, anything?
No.
And I have nothing. Okay, then we are, any correspondence? I don't think I signed.
Just that email that I gave you guys extra.
The. The.
We do have correspondence from the Boy Scouts, all girls.
All right, so recognizing that.
She would like to know if anybody can attend.
Your job, Jamie.
I thought, wait, I thought it was her job.
Nope.
Oh, correspondence, all right, this is, we have any?
Oh, usually, oh, no, no, I meant.
No, you're not to attend, I can.
She can read the notice.
She's supposed to read the notice, I didn't.
So we've got email from the troop leader of 163, which it is an all-girls Boy Scout troop. Five-year anniversary welcoming anybody able to attend.
Great, I will add it to my calendar, has directed.
Directed, fine. Some things are more fun than others. Ribbon cutting at restaurants.
Little Goodwin in it.
Yeah, it's something like that, we got enough little Goodwins around town.
Another one.
So anyways, all right, then we have minutes. We're getting a little messy. All right, we are going to begin with whichever one I find first.
Can I just say one thing about minutes?
Sure.
Okay. I really appreciate getting the backlog. And Michelle, I know you're crazy busy and you did all the licenses, so it's really not a criticism of you by any means. But I have a hard time when they, like, when they're so far behind. And again, it's happened with other admins, too. I don't really know how to correct it, but when we're asked to like, look it over and then approve minutes and they're six months or a year old, I just, I'm just relying 100% on the fact that they're accurate. Because I can't remember who made the motion.
The one, two.
And so, you know, maybe if, in the new year.
Us, get them back, they're not.
No, no, I get it, and I don't.
The goal is to get them done this year.
So when we approve, it's just going to be me, you know, really relying on the fact that you listened to the tape. And, you know, because it's, if at all, on like Tuesday, if we can try to have, because I can remember two weeks back. And I can remember a month back, but, and we've run into this problem before, and it's just.
So we need to catch up on the backlog. And then from there, we really need to start making the effort with all of our boards and commissions. There's, there are, there are legal requirements.
I understand.
And so absolutely, once we get Michelle caught up.
Right.
Then at that point, this board, but I need to emphasize this to all of our boards and commissions, that it is critical that minutes are done within so many days of the next meeting.
You at least need the motion.
Yeah, so I think it's really important, you're bringing up a really good point.
Yeah, like I said, I do the backlog, and I trust you that it's accurate. And then the other thing is, I'm glad that we have all these. In the years past, we aired, and Mary will remember this, on making it like a stenographic record onto prior boards, remember? It was ridiculous. We had every possible, and that is uncalled for. And I know we're just catching up, but maybe if we can flesh out a little, because now these are literally just the motion and who did it, just the motion with no discussion of, so if somebody looked at it, they would think the board didn't even like, discuss this before they voted on it. So once we're caught up, if we could just maybe have a little bit of the discussion that we, that took place.
And then hopefully it doesn't grow to what it was.
It used to be ridiculous, but also now if it's just motion, motion, motion. If someone said, well, did the board even discuss this before they reached their, did they deliberate at all? And we don't have like.
Or even a sentence saying that after.
The board deliberated or something.
Yeah, okay.
Then they would know to look to a tape.
The link as well on there, so that.
That's helpful.
Because I don't have a lot of that.
Right, no, that's helpful.
Okay, so with that, the February 21st, 2023 is the first one. Really was just me, Mary, and Chase that evening, so maybe we should hold those till Chase is here and see if he has any comments.
Okay.
Is everybody fine with that? So then we can move to April 24th, 2023.
Same thing.
It's the same issue.
You know what, we can hold, but can I just give my comment? Because maybe if you come back, you can, because we're going to vote on it when Chase is here. On page 139, it just says, Town Administrator Grant stated Article 7 has been vetted through the community preservation, that's all clear with state regulations, and that the 1.7 million in requests complied under historic. What does, what does that mean? That's all, I just, the 1.7 million in requests.
Which paragraph?
It's.
Right, that was the senior center, and it had to qualify for CPC, I believe, under historic renovation.
Okay, it qualified as historic renovation under the CPC.
Right, 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 just, because I didn't, yep.
So we'll hold that one as well. We are also moving to June 20th, 2023. All right. This is easy.
I know, this is when I had my legs done.
All right, Mary Lou, Mary Dowling, any comments?
Yeah, there's one on page 146, it's under Q, it just says, consideration impossible. Maybe we need to act.
Anything else?
And we're holding on that one, too, for the same reason?
No, that's.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Lou was there, I apologize.
Yeah, you three people can vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 20, 2023.
I'll second. All those in favor?
I abstain.
Yep, three favor, one abstention. Moving to July 3rd, 2023. Any comments?
I'm okay with it.
Mary Dowling?
I was absent, so.
Oh, okay, that makes sense, sorry. All right, do we have a motion, Mary Lou?
I'll make a motion to accept the July 3rd, 2023.
As written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
And then it's, one abstention.
One abstention. All right, and then we are to the August 7th, 2023.
I had one question, I mean, probably won't be able to answer tonight. Did we already approve the August 21st, two weeks later? Because the reason I ask is, this was the one about the dish. And I remember the board agreed that the town administrator was authorized to move forward on a license agreement. And I believe, and I don't know if it was this meeting or the following one, I asked for KP's something in writing because I thought there's a policy consideration, not just, so I wanted to know what their thoughts were, because they.
I think, yeah, I think I forwarded you an email, I'm not sure we ever brought it back to the board.
Oh, this 21st was approved, though.
Yeah.
Oh, it was, is that where I referenced the policy consideration? I just wanted it somewhere that I had asked. This makes it look like we were all on board that, you know, the board agreed that the town administrator was authorized to move forward on a license agreement. And at one of the meetings, I wanted.
So I couldn't ask if there's a policy.
On a license, maybe it should be changed to negotiation.
Yeah, I think what, I think the proper framing was not that Robin had an absolute green light to just go on it, was that she, we said, yeah, it makes sense to engage with them, see what's going on, and then from there.
They'll come back.
Come back, yeah.
So maybe on page 154, we want to change, the board agreed that the town administrator was authorized to move forward.
On discussion, right, on a discussion regarding.
And I just, maybe it was in the following two weeks that I said, what about the policy consideration? And, so I don't remember if I said it in this meeting anymore.
It probably was this meeting, I'm pretty sure this.
Yes, I'd like something.
It sounds like it was that meeting.
I'd like something in there.
I'll listen to it again.
M. Dowling questioned whether there is a policy consideration underlying the negotiations. And not just within the power of the town administrator under the charter, or words to that effect.
Well, you can rent.
I technically, and that was a decision from KP, that I can, I can actually have the authority to license it. Not that I would, but that, yeah, KP did it, I think, I thought I forwarded that to you.
You may have, I just wanted something.
It's written in the charter, too.
Right, it's pretty, it is actually, KP said it was very clear, but, I mean, obviously, I also can abdicate that, if you will, to the board, which I would on something like that, and.
But we lease, but then the ultimate signature has to come from the board.
Oh, not if it's a license. Well, no, not that kind of a license, believe it or not, and I asked KP about that, that's a separate type of licensing. It's not like licensing a business.
Can you, can you, we provide Mary the.
I will, yeah. I mean, we're not doing it that way, but yes, we're doing a license, but one that the board would approve. I'm choosing to put it to the board.
Okay, so, so now it is different.
It, yes, I am, well, no, it was going to be then, too.
No, no, I get it, but now that you're putting it before the board.
It's still going to be a license, but.
It's still going to be a license, but if we have to sign it, now there's a policy consideration, no? Are we, are we just required to sign it?
I don't even know that you would sign it or vote to just authorize me to enter it.
I think what my recollection on it is, is that the email stated that it was a licensure, consequently, Robin could engage in that way if she wanted to. And I think Robin's point now is that even if she could do that, she's not going to do that.
I get it. But it wouldn't be that you would have to sign it. It would be, what I would be asking you for is a vote for you to authorize me to sign it. So there wouldn't be a policy change per se that puts a weird kink in the charter. It would keep, it wouldn't go against the charter, but I am simply looking to you to support my signature on that license, is what I will do. But you could deny.
Yeah, well, let's, we'll take it, take it as it comes, but, because this is the minutes about it.
I just wanted to reference somewhere, and I don't remember what.
No, you're right, I think it was this meeting, because I think this is the first time this meeting, and that's when we had a lot of conversation.
Do you want to just vote it as amended, is amended and will amended, do you want us to review it?
I think we'll look at the tape and probably.
Or if you.
I'll listen to it again, let me just listen to it again.
And then we'll put it back up.